Good morning, Wayne.
How you doing?
Oh, you know, super, right?
Wonderful Wednesday.
Yeah. It's just like Steve used to say, well, they're still coming.
The word must be good.
There's applause right there.
There's applause.
Show it up! Across the person's yard.
When do you get to certain jobs, how's it going?
Oh, yard market.
It typically, it depends on, you know, what's put in.
Yeah.
It was put in with one of those little piles at eighteen twenty-four. It's not eight feet. Main lines, they try to get down about six feet.
I was thinking it was at least three feet, or two or three feet.
Yes, but I'll tell you, if you're gonna be digging, it could be as shallow as six inches.
I've been scratching. I got, when they, when they marked it last time, I put posts and markers. So I lined up those posts, it should be right here, and I started watering that, so I can scratch it up, you know, hornbills and things like this, clean it up my hand. I'm down about that far.
Now, when you're looking for it, you're digging with a shovel, trying to find that, it'll be down three feet.
I'm not gonna use no shovel.
But when you're using a power tool, then it'll all be down six inches.
I'm, uh, I'm gonna get them out there. I said, my wife said, why don't you get them located? I said, well, if I get really close, they can actually tell me how, six, eight inches away from, you know.
Most of the time.
Yeah, 'cause I've done locate for piping, but it depends, but, but if you get a good ground and stuff, sometimes you can get on there.
It all, there, there are some of the nerves to that, 'cause I, I located that, you know, for years, and I located the power dead on. And, uh, our cable was decided by the safety.
I'm surprised I didn't really agree with that.
They didn't pick up that cable three feet away to save us all. But that power line, they just said, yeah, for the power line right here.
Right?
And then you go and dig and find those three feet over, yep.
They put them all in the same trench.
Yeah, then, then it'd be good.
On the back end.
If they're in the same trench, then it should be down with the power. Should be that deep.
Do, do they put a burial at the top first, for the burial?
Sometimes they do.
Just like, just like.
Well, when I, when I was getting a cable with M D U, the heat come up, they put in this power. Then they said, well, they need, first, then, then I just throw it in with the power. Then they came along and said they don't want it laying up against their power, so they put in a little bit of dirt. Then a few years later, they said, we only want the same trench, so we gotta trench beside. So there's all kinds of stuff, like in North Buell.
There's.
Yeah.
I know guys that bury two by sixes a foot above it, bury orange wide orange burial tape. There's no hard and fast.
Okay, we'll call the Wednesday, August eighteenth, Mercer County meeting order. Have the agenda in front of us? Are there any additions to the agenda?
Mister Chairman, I would like to add a few things, and they won't take a long time. Uh, I would like to add, number one, budget line items, that's the title. And the second is the auditor prepared fund balance report, she called it the financial report, for July thirty-first, we just received it. I'd also like to add A R P A, which is the American Rescue Plan Act. That'll be very, very brief. And at the end, just so we don't forget it, I'd like to get an update on our audit report, where we're at on our audit. That's it.
Okay, portfolio updates will be last, then. Any other additions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Got stuck there.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
You have a second?
My second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Oh, aye.
Gene, aye. Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August fourth meeting?
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Gene, aye. Review and approve bills. And, oops, sorry. And once again, if there's a question on a bill, let me know, we'll pull it aside, and then if and when we get an answer, we'll approve it or disapprove it.
There's a bill in there for the Bismarck Tribune for seven hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Right there.
That apparently was missed back in April, it's for the recorder position that we advertised. I am wondering what line item the board wants to take that out of. That's a big bill that nobody had budgeted.
For whose position?
Recorder.
Recorder.
Well.
On the recorder, what are the line item choices? I don't have my.
Where would it, where do they normally come out of advertising expenses for a department head?
Well, it's normally budgeted, like planning zoning, Cindy's got it in the budgets. You know, we have another general fund publishing, publication budget, that's where the minutes come out of.
But like their Carter's office doesn't have that, is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay. No, they don't ever have to publish anything, you know.
Okay.
They're not required to publish anything.
So do even.
They're gonna budget for like the publication and the general fund line. Like I know my minutes and different things like that are gonna come up in all mine, when I just did the advertisement. I know what's coming out. So I'm just gonna give you a heads up that whatever we take out, it's probably gonna go over.
Right.
Right.
The line item. So my recommendation would be the general fund, um, publication line.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Because my next follow-up question would be, when we advertise for like the state's attorney, where'd that come out of?
That would've come out of my publication. But our advertisements in the Star and the Beacon aren't.
Are nowhere near, but this is, this is wow.
This is wow, yeah. Big.
A little mind-blowing though.
Do you know how many weeks it was for, or was it a one, not that?
One week.
Well, yeah, that's right.
But they don't pu- but they don't publish every day, every week either. So I'm not sure how many times it was actually published, but it was just for one week.
Yeah, it doesn't indicate how.
It's kind of how daily is a week?
Did, did anyone call him and ask him why it's so much?
That's just the rate. She sent it to me before, she sent me how much it was gonna cost before she published it, but I was, you know, I was told that you guys to publish it in the Tribune, and so I did.
And I mean, that's what we see when we.
I think I did call you and tell you that it was gonna be how much it was gonna be.
And I'm like, yeah, that's what we pay.
Yeah. And you know because you publish all the time.
All right, so it's not a whether, it's not a question of approval or not, it's a question of where we would.
Which account.
Which account.
Correct. Since I don't know what happened to it back in April.
Well, that's where the state's attorney one came out of, I think that's where this one needs to come out of. Okay. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I think so.
Do they just balance, or do they?
No, they just called me yesterday and she said, well, you mailed the bill back to April. I'm like, oh, I didn't check the right mailing address, so I don't know. Of course, we're still getting, like, applications from election two years ago back in the mail, and Don's still getting tax statements back in the mail from two years ago, so.
That's not helpful.
I said UPS.
No, UPS just tells you they delivered your package, and then you don't get it, and then like, the next day, it's like, still unseen cloud Minnesota, you're like, just got the delivery confirmation yesterday.
Yeah, that still says it.
That's it.
The kids are waiting by the door for their new school shoes and they don't show up.
Yeah. It's like when we order something. When's it gonna be there? Uh, sometime between August tenth and August twenty-eighth.
I heard doors in May, and he said, pretty soon, well.
Soon, I love that.
June, July, August, almost gone, and I still don't have any doors. There's some white stuff coming from what I heard. Well, no. With wind. Just sad, they were collecting fertilizer in one spot, and they pee through the nose in the other spot.
Oh, yeah.
So then we have a consensus on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That just blows my mind, it's that much money.
We'll have to, uh.
But thanks for bringing that up, showing it to us.
Make considerations in the future, huh?
All I wanna say is indeed, love it, indeed. I'm sure that costs a fee though, too, doesn't it? To use indeed?
Indeed? I have no clue.
We all hire so many people, I love it.
I don't think so.
What about the budget, are we going through each line item, or what?
The stuff I have, that I handed out, will show you everything that I'm discussing. Shouldn't have to, Shannon. Most of it's gonna be, kinda like discussing that bill, it'll go that fast. If you want to be, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm on my tour. No, I'm good. Okay.
I don't really get messed up in my mind.
No?
Is there a local?
Lower.
Yeah, so it's pretty hard to.
I have to spend some of that.
It's like toothpaste.
The, uh.
I think they just buy whatever they can find as cheap.
Okay.
And whatever would fit for the complications for me safe. Cause you know, you could get a huge tube, and then it's still a little.
Aggressive.
Yeah, or, like I used to have, we'd use that, we'd take orange peels and.
Well, yeah.
I still wash the razor earlier.
Yeah. Well, I, yeah, they'll, they'll have a plan, I'm sure.
So I think you have to have specific ones for jails.
And then, well, and right here, it's eleven thousand dollars, you know.
Yeah, they usually don't get their chemical bills until.
Right. Liza, what's a golf pencil? I'm sure that's the safety part, you know?
Yep, there's certain, like I was talking to Travis, there's.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, there's certain things, like a lot of them are like so bendable that there's nothing you can do except for barely write with them, so that way you can't use it to like.
As a weapon?
Stand people or to hurt yourself.
Kids have pencils like that. They're like completely, they're rubbery, completely bent.
Yep, it's super hard to write with them, but you can still write with them, but, yeah.
I throw them in the garbage because I think they're dumb.
All right, they're five dollar pins, yeah.
Right?
I don't buy them. They get them like at school in the treasure chest or something.
Yeah.
The treasure chest.
Cause in ink, in ink pen, especially the dicks.
Oh, hell, yeah.
They're damn good weapons. Some of these movies advertise that stuff, you know? They weren't good for spitballs.
Yeah.
Kind that you could pull.
How would you know?
The pen out of it.
Yeah, pull the pin out of it.
It has a knobby kid on the school bus.
Yeah.
He's still a knobby kid on the school bus.
I'm sure they don't do that nowadays, do they?
No.
No. They actually do. Really nice tone in, I think it'd be.
You know Lucifer was an angel too, right?
He's great.
Yeah. Oh, boy. One of them, yikes. Dragging them by the ear to the jailhouse.
Yeah, we're gonna be like, Wayne, get over here.
Get over here. No, we have a mean, mean superintendent, so you behave yourself. One of my boys did something, and I thought, what the heck, that's so weird. I was at work, so I had a really good friend I had been talking to, and I said, you know, what am I doing wrong? I won't give his name. He said, Marvin, I raised three boys, and I picked every one of them up at the jail office. He said, you know, well, he's not there, so I guess. Do you need supply?
So this balance is actually not, not that, is it? Yes.
Sure do haul a lot of vehicles.
But if you take it into relation, how many they could haul, should they don't?
It was more of a state, not a property.
Yes. By the, like the rule that you turn on the lamp. Yeah.
Another tow.
Be reasonable one.
That's number.
Second vehicle, I see that I got towed.
I missed a part of it.
By, by our county.
Yeah, I didn't catch the whole thing, just where it was.
Pardon? I know that. It says who's it is. But that's the second one I see. There's another one down here for the. That does get billed.
One.
That does get billed back to them, so to speak, right? They have to pay that fee out.
No, no, we were coming back from a final wait, so Saturday, and I looked at it, I'm like. And Ryan's like, no, no, it means you. Other stuff, but I'm like.
Yeah.
You know, if it just kinda gets in the one direction, you're like, mm, I don't like that.
Yeah, it's bad, it's like, you know, smoking, my desperate, my god, you know.
Billows out and add, yeah.
I wanna know where a state could get a rate like that. I know we get a discount if that's needed.
During the fair?
Yeah.
We get a lot of agency assist calls too.
I was surprised it wasn't three times.
Yeah, at least, yeah.
One where they had.
Yeah, good. Any state was a zone?
Yeah.
This is his motel bill?
Yes. During the state fair, Travis pointed out.
Yeah, 'cause it says it's a judge at the state fair, it was like, wow, you got that screaming deal. Unless he slept in the lobby, I guess I don't know.
I was gonna say, what? Wow, and this is at a particular, yeah, I know that, yeah. Okay. Now he make the, he'll make the rest of us look bad.
Unless the fair had some special rate that they could get for judges.
You know, the extension agency probably did get a block.
Yeah, you would think they should have it reduced.
And every year, they do it, so.
Yeah.
Probably use the same room.
Probably.
Yeah.
Okay, one, two.
This is Houston Engineering, this is for our landfill, a new.
I'm assuming.
I don't know if he did or not, I don't think so.
Expansion?
No, that landfill bill isn't for the proposed expansion. Cause we haven't voted for that yet.
Well, he's already prepared the plan with the X, though.
That's a very.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, his work that he's done for.
Now that, that could possibly be correct.
Um, it says right here. Further than referring documentation and philosophy for elements of environmental quality. Preparation of the financial assurance, and according to annual ground, I have been loaded for a sample collection.
Doesn't sound like it's for the.
So that's just.
Regular work.
Regular.
District based, just whatever the worst budget of.
Okay. And that, uh.
It's not cheap.
That comes out of.
Engineers. Not so cheap about it.
That comes out of the landfill budget.
Neither is the schooling for it.
Our engineers. Ooh, it took your own course.
Well, well, that's not what the engineers get paid, that's what the company gets.
It doesn't trickle down, huh?
Well, trickle, yes.
More of a drip, per se.
Trickle's like we've gotten rain, huh? Ten, ten hundredths trickle. I'm gonna be unpopular, but I'm gonna ask if this is a conflict of interest. We're purchasing stuff from our employees.
Oh, is that what that?
Yes. Just Kurt's small engine, but we see these from time to time, they're nothing major, but it's kinda like a conflict of interest, that we have an employee, and he has his business, and we're buying our stuff through him.
I don't know, we've done that since I've been here, so I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know neither. I know we've been doing it since I've been here too, for almost three years, and. Sometimes like batteries, and you go, why aren't they getting them from interstate battery? They, they run here and there, you know? It just looks.
From Napa or, or at least.
That's understandable, it could get.
Yeah, it is.
Spotted.
Interesting question.
It is.
One of those deals, if you go through the whole.
Don't look so good, yeah.
No.
Process, there could end up, you know, I'm not defending them, nor am I just saying.
There's a funny feeling to it.
Yeah, but you end up paying more in the end.
I agree with all that.
Yeah, like the new, they got, get billed directly to where the product was purchased. Anyway.
That will prove.
Cause I know, my husband just went to another battery, it was much more than a hundred and seventy dollars.
Hundred and seventy's a darn good battery. I just bought two for my pickup, it was three hundred and sixty dollars.
He got one for both, I'm saying, the classic, and it was over a hundred dollars. For one.
Buy a lot of wall life for that.
That's what I say.
You're getting some of the best high-priced meats around.
And delicious, low calories.
You'll have to look up, uh, Jeff Fox, where these, uh, uh, kinda rant about deer hunting, cause he goes through the whole thing, and he's got a list of all his expenses, it's like, I am providing for my family, and this meat is a hundred and thirty-five dollars a pound. You can't hit that in the store.
I got that, uh, once in a lifetime milk tank. I told my wife, I said, it's brilliant to avoid elephants, and the expenses are like. But it's, I got most of it, just finding the right shell. I got.
Oh, you're still looking for your shells.
I got eighteen shells of just the right kind.
It's not like my.
I take two in case. I always tell people.
You're good like your mom, you only need one.
I only take two, I always take two, in case I drop.
Yeah.
When you get that, by feeder, your hands.
It adds up very expensive.
It's totally different when you're out there. You can use your sled, and you can do your target, and, yeah, your lineup on a deer is totally different.
Your, your best shooting is the action shooting, cause if you're actually like taking your time, the heart, everything is pumping.
I might have to take my time, though, still it's gonna be perfect. I don't want the first pack, I want to have the pressure of the elephant.
Another bill to make the taxpayers happy, asbestos thirty-eight thousand. I'm gonna continue to be unpopular, the same question. Shannon, would you please provide me the, the invoice and whatever on that battery? I wanna know what he bought it for, and what size battery it was. I'll go, I'll go to nap, and I'm gonna check the prices. I just want to know. Poms Tire, where's Poms Tire? It's in Bismarck.
Bismarck, it says.
It says Bismarck. That's what it says, but have you ever heard of Poms Tire? No, I haven't. It's a matter, it's a new one.
This one's a little stout.
A stout. And I can send you an email on that.
It feels heavy.
Oh, okay.
That darn Google. There, here it is, Poms Tire.
Eight twenty-five, South Seven Street.
Oh, I didn't look at any, I just looked.
South Seven Street, that's not, that's pretty close to that hardware store, hardware store down there.
I think it's that, that used to be right across the street from the mall there, from where, is that used to be called, the tires.
You know what it used to be called?
That's where it's at.
Old Rick West Tire.
They moved.
That's, that's where it's at.
Must have had a lot of bills this month.
We're being scrutinized very good, don't you think?
You'd have to pull that.
Yeah, some of these are pretty, bills are pretty big, but I'm sure.
I'm sure. Hopefully.
Because of, I think this, I think that's a particular size.
It's cheaper to stay on land than it was in either.
It's what?
Get a little spread.
Oh, okay. Geez, I'll open the break to that one.
Operator, gain is awful great still. Not, not being facetious either.
So this S B M, this Southwest Business Machines, were only paying the last invoice, announced it not received?
Mm-hmm.
Not ordered?
Yeah, there was a, there was a mix up with the orders this last year. We're going to need delivery orders.
Are they done with their asbestos removal? Take it as a final bill?
Okay, and I kind of remembered.
Right, right.
Okay.
And that's, they talked about last year already. I thought it was a done deal.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I think we're almost done. Cindy?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
And like, because I don't remember it.
My goodness. This lady came up from South Dakota and her expenses were like nothing. Like this, you know? Like she, extremely low bill.
Shannon? I think this one might be in the wrong spot. It's a victim witness fees and mileage and it's in the West River telephone thing.
Oh, they put it together.
Do you want me to take it out?
Probably.
Or should I not touch it?
No, it shouldn't be in there. It shouldn't be in there because otherwise it's going to get missed and Jean won't get it signed and.
My mistake.
I don't want to get in trouble for doing it, but I'm like, wait a minute, that doesn't look right.
I'm going to leave this.
So that would be the first time today, Liza?
It's part of the western horizon, right?
No, this is West River. That's horizon. What was that, Jean?
Made first time today. You got in trouble?
Of course. First time this year, Jean. This year.
First time all in the year?
Ever.
Sorry.
It's time in her whole life.
Yeah.
Very thorough catch, Liza. Yeah, I slacked on it. I didn't.
Catching your slack there, Wayne. That's why we have five people that goes down.
That's right.
Mark's trying to find that golden nugget too.
I see that.
I'm glad to get some of them. You looked at all the little vouchers, eh? That's why, that's why the sheriff's got to sign all them little vouchers. Twenty-one forty. That's road department. Golden Nuggets for me.
No.
Trusting Liza then. Take care of that one.
And you can't even say, here's a quarter. Call someone who cares.
Right. I'm not going to cover it.
You've reached the laughing line.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the bills?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Wayne?
How about I?
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Cindy, sorry about the delay.
That's fine. Um, I guess I really don't know how this works. Um, Gary and I used to always go to the Vanguard user group training together. And I think I have to come in here and ask for permission for both Jen and I to go because our office would be closed. And Shannon's office has agreed to do the moving permits, which would be the only thing that would have to be done right away. So, and that is on September twenty-first and twenty-second, which would be the days that our office would be closed. So, I don't, I don't know how it works actually. Do you remember, Wayne?
I think they just give you a third blessing. It was just more, more less informational coming in.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that's the only time that that meeting happens and that's the training.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. Where, where is it at, Cindy? Where is it at?
It's in Bismarck.
Bismarck? Okay.
That's good.
It was in Tijuana or something like that.
Yeah, too bad it's not. That would be nice.
Then you got to go with Jenny.
So are we approving the closure of the office? Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
I believe so.
And then the auditor's office will cover permits, right?
Yeah.
Thanks for informing us.
Okay, so do I have a mo- motion as such?
Shouldn't need a motion. No.
No?
Do you don't need a motion?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Thanks.
It's just information and we're saying, you bet.
Okay.
But we're going to watch and see for a Tijuana bill.
Yeah, there's five of them. They're pretty sharp.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the sheriff's, uh, July fees of five thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-one cents?
I saw a move.
Have a second?
I'll second. Can't.
Liza, second?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Marvin?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye. July recorders fees of six thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Wayne?
How about I?
Jean, aye. Endrin refund of twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Do we need a motion to approve that?
These are all, these are all revenues.
I didn't know we needed a motion to approve income.
We got that much from Endrin?
All of them are income.
Yeah, they're all.
Oh, okay. I understand that, but I'm, a refund.
I'll move to approve the Endrin refund.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second out.
Is there any further discussion? I guess Jean had it beforehand. Yes, Marvin?
Is this, I'm, I'm not sure that I've seen this before. That's a pretty large refund.
It's usually not this large. Um, it's usually like seven or eight thousand. That's, if I have this right, that's, they get so many dollars or so much money for documents they report from this Endrin. It's the reporters' network. North Dakota Recorder or something network. So then it goes, this amount goes into the Dr. Pres part, which is two one one zero.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it's an online service that really helps the engineering and surveying world, so we don't have to come to court houses all the time.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Wayne?
How about I?
Liza?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Um, wind ordinance update.
Yep, that's for me.
Okay, Liza?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that I did meet with Nextera. And, um, it was a pretty good meeting, informational for me as well. And then, um, prior to meeting with me, they had met with Lad Erickson. And, um, that evening, they were going to meet with Anna and Mark from Faces of Coal. And what we've come up with or what we would like to bring to the commission is that since Nextera came in on the very end of this, like they just came into it. They're asking that we, um, push this out for actually quite a ways. Because they're just trying to get their feet wet and trying to figure out what we need to do when they're working with McLean County and they're working with all sorts of different areas. And they really think that if we could come together on a good agreement, that's the best for everybody involved. But to try and rush into it would not be good for them at this time. So they're asking that we, um, push this out. I asked them if they had any idea as to how long. They said to have an end date is, um, not very good for communications. So what I was proposing or what I think might be a good thing is that every month I would come in and give an update on where we're at with it. And then at that time I can say, we need to put it on because we're ready to go forward.
Let's, go ahead.
The wind moratorium has to be dealt with by May of twenty-two.
Yep, May of twenty-twenty-two.
So, um, if, that's the only motion that the board has put in place at this time. There was a motion at one of the meetings that Nextera came into and faces the call. I believe we said we were going to revisit it in September.
Correct.
But I don't know if that was in a motion form. Does anybody?
I thought we tabled it to, to meet right up. I think it was a team.
Right.
Yes.
I have a question for you, Liza. Rather than the wrong word, resource that we're trying to regulate, dictate when this should be, can't we put down a mandate, say, this is when we're going to do it? Have your stuff in order rather than them dictate to us what, I'm just asking.
Right, we could do that.
Let's drive the bus.
Right, but the problem with that is it may not give us time to actually negotiate through it all. And that's, that's my only concern is, you know, because I have Faces of Coal on one side, I got Nextera on the other side. We're trying to come up with a resolution that's appropriate for the best we can for all involved. And I, I think having an end date is, is okay, but I don't think having one in September is actually feasible considering working with all these different agencies.
I would like to, um, say that maybe you could, um, relay the, um, message, so to speak, that our, um, moratorium ends in May and we would like to have something in place prior to that.
Yes, I definitely agree that we need to have it in place prior to that. I, I would like it, I myself would like to see it before the end of the year.
I'll agree with you there.
So the motion did say, um, Travis made the motion to table until the second meeting in September at ten thirty and Marvin seconded it, it passed. So I think we should put it on the agenda for the second meeting and then if it's just an update again, it's just an update.
Okay.
But at, you know, at least we're following through with that.
Sure.
Yep. Yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know that Nextera is concerned about that and, and I haven't had a chance to talk with, um, Anna and Mark since they met with them too. So I'd like to have an opportunity to do that. And then I want to talk with Lad as well.
Yes, I think that's more than reasonable. It'd be different if an entity wouldn't want to enter into any discussion, but since you are able to enter in discussion, we can definitely. Doesn't have to be done by September fifteenth, that's for sure.
Okay.
But just, just relay the message that our.
Let everybody know.
On that September fifteenth, no?
That's.
Was there a conflict with that meeting date?
That's when I'm at Camp Crafton, so I will not be here.
I thought we were talking about doing it the twenty-first, but my members.
There was no rule to me, so we probably.
We can just have it on the agenda and we can extend it.
No, she's talking about, um, Liza was going to be gone the fifteenth, which is the.
Be able to give an update though.
Which is the regular schedule.
That's why you made the.
That's why I said the second meeting, because I, we weren't sure if we would keep that date.
So at some point we need to figure out when we're going to have that second meeting in September. You're gone that whole week, Liza?
We leave Tuesday and we don't come back till Friday.
Okay, well, we'll either have to.
And I don't, I mean, you guys can still have a quorum and still have a meeting without me. I just can't bring up the wind ordinance.
And that's, that's fine if the wind.
And that's fine if you guys, I have no problem with you guys still meeting then and then.
Two, two separate things.
Yeah, I can do that.
Two, two separate, uh, things here. The wind or, or the wind ordinance, we can, uh, have, have that on the agenda on the fifteenth as stated. And then we can, um, just move it down. We don't have to make a decision that day. We can, you know, vote and agree to extend the, the date as to when we want to have a wind or, the ordinance in place. Second thing is, yeah, we have to decide if we're going to have a meeting on the fifteenth or if we're going to move it. So that's a, that's a totally separate issue. And we would have to decide that either this meeting or can we even have that discussion on the September first meeting? That wouldn't be too late.
I would prefer to keep it the fifteenth, just for my schedule.
Yeah, I say I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Okay.
Gives you more time to update us.
Because then, uh, the following week, I wouldn't be able to be here. I'm gone, so.
That's fine.
If, if you're okay with that, Liza, then we, that, right, we don't have to.
We don't have to move the meeting every time somebody has a conflict.
Right.
That's true too.
Because you have enough for a quorum, so.
And I'm with you, Liza, that I would definitely like to see this completed by the end of the year.
Okay. Pardon? Nine forty-five, Jim Albert's County Properties. And we're good on that wind ordinance now, right?
Yeah, there's just an update.
Just an update.
We can move on. All right, Jim?
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, you should have a laid up on your desk there, some estimates from two different contractors for, uh, demo on, uh, uh, demo on, uh, two buildings we have downtown here in Stanton. Let's do the auction house first. We got Sletton Excavating for the auction house to demo and backfill the basements. He's in at eighty-eight thousand fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. Then I got C and L Backhoe. Got a quote from him to remove the auction house and backfill the basements at twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And then we go to the grocery store. Uh, Sletton Excavating for all the demo and backfill comes in at eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. And then we got C and L Backhoe for the same to do it for forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Also, if you note that Sletton indicated that he can start the work in three weeks. Uh, C and L Backhoe, he didn't put it on here, but he, he told me that he would be looking at the end of November, beginning of December to start the work. I guess that being said, uh.
Do we know what our obligation is once this is backfilled? Do we have to put black, black dirt and seed it?
No.
No.
That I don't know.
No.
I don't think so.
You said you didn't have any specs? We can't.
I can add my own full yard dirt along with it too.
I'm just asking because it's on Main Street. This could be a weed patch or whatever, you know what I'm saying? It will be a weed patch.
We got chemi.
It was when, I mean.
We got chemi.
Jim mows the weeds at the old cafe.
Hey, we got chemicals to take care of that.
Yeah. We got a weed department.
Okay. All right.
Well, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollar difference in bids.
Yeah.
Yeah. On a.
No brainer there.
So what's the rest of the commission's feelings and what do you wanna do here?
Well, we should probably talk about the budget.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, Jim had a hundred thousand in it last year and it got knocked down to fifteen thousand during budget season.
And I think it's probably what, about twenty to, I didn't bring my sheets in.
It's gotta be twenty-five thousand, close to twenty-five thousand in the hole.
Yeah, overspent already on that.
Because we have asbestos, right?
Asbestos for thirty-eight thousand. Um, the other thing is, is we do have building fund that has a hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred in it, but I would like to see that kept aside for, uh, projects.
Yeah.
Things that come up that are unforeseen in our building that we actually realize.
Yeah, that we have people in.
That's what it was dedicated for.
I'm, I'm thinking though, or just a thought here, Chip would probably get part of this done this year and probably some of that, if he'll even get it all done by, by the, I mean, he might split his bill a little bit. Don't know.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's.
So is this an item that we have to wait on and add in the budget for next year?
No, the board has the authority to amend the, the expenditures throughout the year. You have, you have that authority to do so.
We have to amend.
You know, the grocery store is sitting there with all the book on it at this time.
Yeah, it's gonna go fast, so.
Quick.
So we had talked about at the last meeting, the board's got these quotes, if the road department could help out in any way, shape or form. But I'm not certain with that.
Yeah, so.
I added up these three numbers, asbestos, auction building and grocery building. It come out to a hundred and fourteen fifty, a hundred and fourteen thousand fifty dollars. What's the line item budget that we have right now? I just weren't curious how much we're gonna.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand? So we're roughly a hundred thousand over.
Over budget.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then you still got utility bills coming out of there every month and I don't know if the specials come out of there and.
So it's, do you put the tourniquet on it and stop the bleeding or do you continue?
But we will still have those utility expenses even after we tear the, well, the specials we'll still have even after we remove the buildings.
Let me ask you guys this. Do we wanna wait until January to tear the buildings down? Because we're still preparing a twenty twenty-two budget. And it would be in the budget.
Do you know what was in the preliminary after, that was approved for that line?
Well, the preliminary can be adjusted.
It can't go up though, can it, or, I'm just curious. I think I had.
As a total budget, it can't go up.
Huh?
As a total budget, it can't go up, but items can be moved either.
I don't have those either. You still got them.
I don't have the line by line what's with me. I just have everything.
That, that would be an option, be, either way, we're gonna pay for it in twenty twenty-two. Right?
Right.
Either way, we're gonna pay for it, whether it comes out of the checking account this year or next year.
Right.
Or in September, it'll be October, November.
We don't know what kind of a winter we're gonna have.
He says he wouldn't get here till December anyways.
End of November, yep, first part of December.
The other part is you, we, we kinda do wanna keep going forward because you have this structure open. We don't need a liability part to hit us in the backside yet too. I mean, and, and like you, I mean, Chip has got things scheduled, but it works into his time. And I, I don't think it's gonna be a real quick process, but at least we're going.
Yeah.
And like Jim said, uh, the building will deter, if we get rains, it'll just deteriorate. And, uh, so the safety issue is part of the.
There's a safety issue and a liability issue is, if it rains in there and destroys some other building, it's like big deal, we're gonna be turning it down anyway.
You guys, you guys are absolutely right. If we do it this year, we're gonna be over budget. We're still in the preliminary stages of our budget. We can adjust the end of year balance that we have for twenty twenty-one and still calculate the twenty twenty-two budget accordingly. It can still be adjusted. We have, to get to our twenty twenty-two budget, you have an end of year twenty twenty-one estimate. Once we plug these numbers in there, that estimate will influence the twenty twenty-two budget and we can make adjustments at that time.
So instead of ending with one point four, what's projected now on one point three?
So.
At twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
Yeah. And that would be taking it out of the general?
That'd be the only place you could take it out of, probably.
Yep, that would work then.
I just asked that for clarification.
Well, with that, I would, uh, move that we go with C and L Backhoe Service for, uh, both buildings.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I will second that.
I think I have one question.
Any further discussion?
Jim, does this include, um, does it include the landfill fees?
Yep, should be.
Because this quote is like, what's Sletton alone?
It says, "And dispose."
It says, "Concrete and dispose."
Okay.
That's everything in there, demolition and removal.
That's a valid question.
Because Sletton alone on the grocery store, only twenty-seven thousand just for disposal. So I just wanna, I just wanted to make sure that that was all in there.
Well, they're looking at different tonnages too. They're estimating tonnages.
Great.
And, and, and that's a good point, that both of these, he's got the price per ton on fill. So depending.
Cause it's five twenty-five and Chip's is one fifty.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in, a, a lot of it, it has to do with location of, of fill.
Right.
Um, and then we don't have a price on the cost per ton of concrete and disposal, but we have a risk, estimated amount. But all I was gonna say is that the fill, you know, that could go plus or minus, but he's got kind of a set amount built into the quote for removal and disposal. So you would have the possibility of a varying quantity on the sand, but the way he has it written, he's got a total for concrete and disposal. Just, just for reference, as I'm reading the estimate.
And that's, I'm, that's what I'm understanding, this estimate is, there would be no other charges.
As far as I know, not. I told them, glued everything.
So just to expound on the motion is that, uh, this, the understanding is that there would be.
We can add that to the motion too. I think that's, I think it's good for business, just to, for the auction dogs at twenty-nine two fifty and the grocery store at forty-six eight hundred.
All right, with no further.
To amend the motion.
With no further expenses.
I can, I'll move to amend that it includes the, the totals listed on the estimate with the caveat that the only variable price or variable quantity could be the fill.
Is that an amendment?
Yes.
Second to that amendment?
I will second that also.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes. Do we need to consider this other proposal at this time? It has to do with the same properties?
Uh, no, we should probably finish this motion and then I think we can acknowledge that, but.
Yeah, that wouldn't be in this motion.
We're not asking on that.
No. Any other discussion?
Do we need to have any contact with the two owners on both sides of the auction house for liability reasons when they tear that down, or does that fall under the contractor's liability as far as those walls and such?
Well, hopefully the contractor does have insurance, or he should, if he's licensed and bonded.
Just so it doesn't fall back on the company.
Yeah, that shouldn't be our liability.
Okay.
Would it be okay to ask our auditor just to send the other owner a letter saying, "We have contracted this company to remove those buildings in November"?
I think it'd be wise.
That's all we have to do.
Yeah.
If they have any concerns, they can come to you guys or. Yeah?
We're, we're taking it down in entirety. What I'm saying is, we're taking it down entirety. That common wall, that's ours and it's coming down.
The one on the east side of the auction house is actually the wall. It'll have to stay. That one will have to stay.
That one will have to stay, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be his wall, so to speak.
Yeah.
Cause it's right on the property line.
Right.
The other adjacent property owner is understood that, um, the wall's coming down.
Yeah.
So. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the amendment. Travis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Jean, aye on the amendment. Tra, uh, Travis? I mean, on the motion, Travis?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. If there are no road issues. Well, I'll, I'll ask the question when we come back, but we'll take a five-minute recess.
Ten.
What, did that get amended too?
Yep.
It just amended it. Five minutes isn't enough time for me to slow.
He's got a sand quarry someplace, that's why.
Okay, well, it helps us, so.
Exactly, and I'll help him too.
I'll send a letter.
Right.
Right.
And they agreed to ten minutes, sorry.
It is quiet. But, your keep, so you're keeping me September, November, July, December, fifteenth?
Yes.
February, state. And, uh, first meeting in October, April sixth. I'm gonna be on a road trip end of September, but maybe, maybe a little earlier, I don't know where it looks like. I'll leave right after the one meeting and before I miss any commission meetings.
That was priority, right?
That was life sign. Well, it'd be easy if I did, cause I did have my other editor coming.
Oh. That's cause you say you don't have a...
Well, with the hot weather, I'm helping a farmer cut corn, I'm trucking on the collie. And day by day, I can see the corn drying up.
Any, any years in any of that corn?
There are, but there's nothing in them.
My dad got a good crop of corn this year, it's about three, six, seven, a little late, he's just got a little garden.
Dan, that was very deceiving. That's got to be a little more corn, they didn't find out that was a garden.
That pumps water every day, three times a day.
Yeah, you can see the water.
Deer fans around there, so the coons and the deer stay away.
Yeah, the rabbits are getting them there, but they don't, they don't deal with the corn, so...
Talking to a landowner, I seen this combine going yesterday, and I said, you don't have a truck, do you want me to come and give you a ride back? And say, get your truck, and he said, no, he said, it'll take about an hour before I got the hopper full. Just drive home, get the truck, and that'll be about another hour. It's, it's usually is, you can't get trucks to field fast enough. I'll cycle in either truck, on rail. I forgot about this, I have to bring that up, real quick.
Well, that's what I'm gonna say, I'm gonna acknowledge receiving it now, based on our discussion, discussion and our...
We gotta do say, we acknowledge receiving, we're not interested. We need to tie it to those other reasons.
That was a, that was a offer in August, in August, well, I don't remember.
Okay. Well, we'll reconvene. Just a note, we did get a, a letter, I think all the commissioners have a copy of it, it's, deals with our properties here in Stanton, but based on the decision of the commission of, uh, just prior here in our meeting on what we're gonna do with those buildings, I don't think we have to entertain anything on this, uh, proposal.
I'm not interested in this proposal.
I don't think so, because we already made a motion as to what we're going to do, this would just be one of the, this would just be another option of what we would wanna do, and we already decided what we're gonna do, so...
Could this be considered, things we put this out for bids, could this be considered part of the bid package?
This is not part of the removal, this is, this would be different than removal, so...
But we did put it out for bids, I'm just asking, is it...
No, no, this is separate from, uh, this is separate from Jim's estimate, this was a, this was an offer.
Yeah. And we'll just reject the offer.
Okay, I'm good with that, but just wanna make sure it's not...
Okay.
I'm not interested in...
Road issues, are there any road issues? Alright, I know I spoke ahead of, out of turn there, but I didn't think there were any. Okay, um... Well, we can, it's just a few minutes early, but I don't see any, no reason we can't listen to Sherman, Wenner, Houston Engineering. Did I even get close to pronouncing that correct?
Warner.
Warner, okay.
Richardson Warner's, right?
From Dickens, right?
Yeah, we talked about that regularly. Close enough.
Thank you, Sherman.
These people wanna talk to me today. Go ahead.
Commissioners, thank you, uh, if you recall, two weeks ago, we talked about trying to move forward with phase construction for lining project for cell six and seven, to prepare that, to receive waste within the, the next year. There was concerns about my estimated cost of what that construction may take. In the last two weeks, I met with the county auditor, Shana, went through what I perceive to be the upcoming projects going out quite a few years, what that might look like, and then a discussion about this project. One other request from you, the commission, at the last commission meeting was to look at maybe separating out the cell six from the cell seven, and then add the cell seven lining as an add alternate to the bid. So that's what I just handed out, what I think that might look like. If you bid out the cell six portion quantities as a base bid, I believe, my estimate would be is that maybe around that hundred-and-twenty-eight, hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollar project amount. And then the additional quantity to add in the cell seven quantity onto that same project, that might be a fifty-two to fifty-three thousand dollar adder onto that for the construction. I believe, doing the add alternate would give the county the option to award that, you know, extra cubic yardage or not, depending on where the bids come in at, the final bids, I'm just estimating, you never know where the bids might come in at.
Right.
So provides...
So if I understand you correctly, if we do just cell six, it's a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand? If we do both cell six and seven, it's, would be a hundred-and-eighty, or is this just some prep work on cell seven?
Well, it would be the lining, so it'd be, you know, lining both cells six and seven.
Okay.
And then, um, down there, you have the construction costs of twenty-nine-five, so that would be on top of the one-twenty-eight.
Correct.
Or on top of the one-eighty.
Yeah, that's administrative costs, there is a reconstruction report that is required for the Department of DQ for the permit, to summarize all the soil testing and, and everything, so...
So in conversation, um, from our meeting that we had last week, Sherman, we had gone through all of the components of the landfill's finances and how much were required by statute to keep aside for post-closure, then we have operational, or we call it sequential closure, and then capital projects. And as we looked at the budget and the money Candy has on hand, what she anticipates spending this year, and her revenues anticipated for twenty-twenty-two, we had talked that we would only wanna spend a maximum of a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars to maintain the funding regulations. So in looking at this, this is a hundred-and-sixty, so it's thirty thousand over, which the thirty thousand we were gonna put into capital projects, we could, instead of putting them into capital projects for this year, for twenty-twenty-one, we could put that in the sequential closure fund, and then just start the capital projects in twenty-twenty-two. Because, my understanding is we need to get moving on at least this cell now.
Cell six, yeah.
We don't necessarily need to do both, but we have to get moving on one of them. Is that, is that clear?
Yes, yes.
Because otherwise, otherwise, when we look at your projected projects, um, we still have to close area two. I mean, you have that slated by twenty-three, we talked that it could be pushed out to twenty-five, but then we have the inner closure of one, that needs to be, has to be done in twenty-four, and that's, you know, you're estimating at a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. So we need to keep building those reserves, but at the same time, we need to spend the funds to get this one line to move forward.
Because it has to have a certain level of trash that has to sit on it for an amount of time, correct?
Yes, I mean, you, you want to have a period of time where you allow that garbage to settle, and granted, the facility uses a compactor, so it should be less than it has been in the years past, but you do provide intermediate cover, then you allow some time for that settlement, so that you hopefully have less issues with the cap project after, in the long term, so...
Shannon, you said...
But you do have to provide intermediate cover, the way between, for that, so...
Shannon said that, you, you mentioned the word capital projects, what are you referring to when you said the thirty thousand from the capital projects?
Um, every year, if you look at Candy's budget, she budgets thirty thousand for future equipment. And up until this point, um, we have never had a separate fund, so that those monies, like, she budgets thirty thousand, I don't know the last time you ever, when you bought your truck, probably quite, quite some time ago, was the last time we used it, but then that money is never transferred anywhere, so it just stays in the landfill fund, which we all know that since that's an enterprise fund, whatever she's got in there at the end of the year is exactly what she starts with, that money never goes anywhere, gets transferred out anywhere unless it's into one of her other funds. Right now, she only has a post-closure fund and an operational, which we're gonna start calling the sequential closure, because it, it makes more sense, as Sherman had explained, kind of the process of those two funds. The, the post-closure is something like, if it would close now, we have to, by law, have enough money in there to take care of everything. But that's on a, a very prorated basis over, I believe, sixty years.
Over the estimated life of the facility.
And so, when, every year, we get this financial assurance that we have to calculate, and they give us an inflation rate, so then we adjust our numbers based upon that inflation rate, and that's how much we know that we need to push over into these funds. So right now, the county does have the operational post-closure, so Sherman and I had talked about creating also a capital projects fund, and pushing that thirty thousand that she's got, that she budgets every year for future equipment, pushing that into the capital projects fund. And some things that he, there was three items that he had listed under the capital projects to be annualized, and that was a compactor, a loader, and a pickup. So he's got the years, you know, when we were planning, he had suggested, you know, five years from now, we might need a new compactor, six years from now, we might need a new loader, so we should be saving and building those funds up over time. Um, I did have some conversation with, um, the state auditors last week about this fund itself, and we're gonna continue that conversation, but they said definitely we're on the right track of creating these separate funds so that it's restricted for those uses. You know, because we can leave the money in there, but then if, when you're looking at it, it's not a true picture. If she's budgeting all of this extra money and not using it, then your fund balance projections are off, and things like that. If you know that this money's getting set aside, we're gonna have that money in those funds. So my suggestion would be to just bid out cell six, and then not put in the thirty thousand that she has set aside for future equipment for twenty-twenty-one, but stick that in the, the operational or sequential closure fund along with the thirty thousand she's already budgeted to put in there. So we'd be sticking sixty thousand in there, and currently, we have a hundred-and-sixty-six thousand in that fund. But like Sherman said, we don't wanna spend that down to zero, because we still have projects that we need to be building up for, and we're, you know, there's regulations on how much money we need to have in those funds.
Now, when you were projecting her costs, or what, what the revenue would be for next year, did you include the increase that we authorized?
We did, yeah, Sherman and I, um, he, I went through per year end numbers from last year, and we kinda just looked at those and added the five dollars more a ton to get a rough estimation. So it's roughly, we figured about forty-four thousand more...
Per year, now?
Per year, with the five dollars. Um, he also had prepared a, a spreadsheet of landfill rates across North Dakota, and at forty dollars a ton, it seems like we're still lower than a lot, Dickinson's at forty-seven, Rydant's at forty-eight, this one's at forty-six, Hartle's forty-six, and then Jamestown is seventy-eight, and Williston's forty-two. So we still are the cheapest at forty dollars, so in another year or two, we wanna look at increasing those rates again. I think we should be proactive and do so.
Well, and, and it kinda depends, those landfills, they're a little larger landfills, and probably fall into a, another category, I'm not sure. Okay, so, uh, we gotta be careful on that too, we can only take, and everybody knows this, we can only take so many tons per, per day, per, per month, and we've gone through that already too, so...
Yeah.
So we're a little bit smaller operation and, and, so, okay.
I feel we're definitely on the right track.
I, I think so, I think so.
Anything that has happened in the past, but we need to be proactive and move forward.
I have a questions for you, Shannon, we have a landfill closure reserve fund, that's eighty-fourty-nine, right?
Um, I don't have...
Yeah, it's, it sort of is, but you said we have a hundred-and-sixty-six thousand in there?
Yeah.
Today? Okay, and we have a, we have the operational, which is fund six thousand and one, got that one. We also have a fund called eighty-fifty, and I think that's the, it says landfill loan, I think that's the landfill post-closure fund?
Yes, and that has, it was not quite eighty-three thousand, but it was like eighty-two-nine, something.
Eighty-two-seven ninety-nine.
There you go.
Point two-nine, if you wanted me to write down the tax on that, but, okay, so, you can assure me a hundred percent that those monies are in those funds, we're up to date on those?
Yes, those are the funds that are specifically set aside, and they get the journal entry at the end of every year into those accounts. The journal entered from Candy's landfill account into funds eighty-fourty-nine and eighty-fifty. Our trial balance also reflects that, and guessing you stopped, that's where you got those numbers, was the trial balance, so that is what's in those funds.
One thing that I noticed, on the post-closure fund eighty-fifty, at the end of twenty-nineteen, we had a value, and it's different than the beginning of twenty-twenty, now this is end, end to beginning, those numbers should always be the same. And that difference is roughly eight thousand dollars, which is the payment amount, so that's just...
It's not the difference between the end and the beginning, because you don't see a trial balance until the end of every month, so you don't know the, you don't have record of the December thirty-first, and then you don't get another trial balance the next day on January first. You get a trial balance at the end of the month.
Thirty, thirty days later, thirty-one days.
So it's actually...
Oh, okay. Yeah, that...
I understand what you're saying, that, I'm disagreeing with you, I understand, the way you're saying it, that is correct, but when you look at the trial balance, you have the beginning of the year. Look at the trial, it's there, you have the end of twenty-nineteen, and you have the beginning of twenty-twenty, those numbers should always be the same. That's just, that's just an automatic. So anyways, and I see the same thing on eighty-fourty-nine, that happened twice, it didn't happen every year. Sixteen to seventeen is correct, seventeen to eighteen is wrong, eighteen to nineteen is wrong. There's just, there's too many discrepancies on that.
Okay, where, where are we going with this, where are we going with this, um, cell six?
I'm, let me finish, please.
I'm not gonna debate, sit here, and we're not gonna debate five years of what has happened. Right now, the discussion on the table is what we're going to do with the landfill on cell six, and we're gonna move forward with that right now.
Mister Chairman, I'm telling you that...
I'm gonna call you out of order, real quick.
You can call me out of order, what I'm debating is, telling you guys, is I'm staying on the subject. What I'm trying to say is that I'm not real sure about these funds, and that's where I'll let it go.
Okay, what, what are we, where are we gonna move now with, uh, with cell six? The recommendation is to do, move forward with cell six, and wait with cell seven.
And, I mean...
So that we can build up that other fund, correct?
Right, is that what you kinda feel too, after our conversation last week?
Are we not gonna get bids on, put this in as a bid for cell six?
Yes.
With an addition on that, so we get numbers?
I would agree, if the, yeah, if the numbers come in low... I would agree, if the, yeah, if the numbers come in low, we definitely.
If the numbers come in, we can readjust or use that option. If not, uh, we, we just go with cell six. It just depends on what those numbers come in on that contractor, yeah.
So essentially, right now, it's just, let's put this out for bids.
Correct?
Right.
Giving Sherman the permission to put it out on bids.
Just, well, just so I'm, I'm clear on that and how I prepare the plans and bid, is that... So the advertisement, if I understand correctly, would be the base bid for cell six. That's what would be the primary bid, and that's what the contractor would be bidding on. But then I'm maybe unclear is, do we still want to add as an alternate? So the county would have an option to award or not award the additional quantity for cell seven?
I think so.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, the bids come in for.
Right, 'cause we never know.
Right, yeah, because the mobilization cost for, more than it's gonna cost us to put in both cells. Twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money for mobilization. And if we do it separate, then we pay it twice. And then we're gonna act like in the future, when we do them other capping deals, it's gonna cost that again to mobilize somebody to come in there.
Yeah, I am, we are winners, uh, yes, I get it.
You get that, but you can't, you can't, I mean, we don't have the funding to do it, it doesn't matter.
You just can't.
I, I have roughly a hundred and sixty-some thousand, correct?
Yeah, but we can't.
But then I got.
We can't burn that down to zero.
Or seven, I got seven months to come up with that other.
And that isn't possible, it isn't feasible. It's not all your operating expenses, it's just not feasible for you to come up with the rest of that money in seven months. Sorry, I know.
Yeah, it's.
Well, let's, let's first find out what the bids come in. You never know what bids might come in for.
To, to get this moving, I will move that we go out for bid with, uh, cell six as the base bid, uh, with cell seven as a additive alternate. And do you need a date for bid opening? What would be feasible, Sherman?
From, you know, at this point, I got a couple adjustments to make, but I would certainly think that, you know, your commission meeting in October. If we could advertise in, end of September, and then open bids.
Second meeting of October? Second, second meeting?
October twentieth?
So with the bid opening at ten-thirty on October twentieth?
And then, you know, construction would be spring of twenty-twenty-two.
Right, yeah. That's my motion, Dean.
Okay, can you read back the motion?
To go up for bid with cell six as the base bid and cell seven as the alternate bid, and to open bids on October twentieth at ten-thirty.
That's your motion, Travis?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a statement that due to the uncertain, uncertainty of the fund balances for the landfill, I cannot support any future spending at this time.
Okay, so noted. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marvin?
Nay.
Jean, aye. Thank you. Okay. Uh, I'll just jump in here on, on their other business audit update.
That's what I have on mine. Um, I've got, uh, on the audit, our county audit, it's, uh, I've been informed that they would contact me and, and/or Shanna, well, and Shanna, the end of probably this week. So hopefully, it'll be this week, just to give the rest of the commission update on that. I was told that last week, and they didn't contact me. I've just been informed that it should be this week, so. Okay, so hopefully, it'll be soon.
Soon.
Sounds like a government word, soon.
Yeah.
That's an H, Harvard.
Okay.
Can't go wrong with that word.
That's an au- that's the, that is the update on the audit so far. Uh, budget line items, Marvin.
Okay, several things, and we should be able to walk through this pretty fast. The first thing is, uh, in, in order that I gave you these sheets, I requested in April that, uh, we put another, that we include the workman's comp on the road fund. And it's already in other funds, it's just not listed on this one, and I would like to see that put on there. For transparency and open disclosure, it's like, let's, let's include everything. If we do it for some departments, we should be able to do it for all of them. So just letting you guys know that I've requested that. And there's my letter to, to our auditor on April twenty-first.
Okay.
The next one is the youth bureau. I gave you guys a sheet for that, too. I think for, again, for transparency, that we can probably consider something. Under, if you look at page fifty-four of the two pages I gave you there, where it says city, county share, that can be broke out individually. Part of it, first thing I'm gonna say is that the money from the county is not revenue. There's a place for transfers in, and that's down at the bottom of the sheet. It is not revenue, it is not money coming in, it's from the general fund. The county share money should be under transfers in. That leaves the city share, which could be brought out there, and we could see exactly what that is.
Mister Chairman, can I add to that?
Absolutely.
Um, that's not the issue. In my conversations with Heath and Mike Lasky from the state auditor's office, the youth bureau and the task force are now separate line items within our general fund. They're not special revenue funds, because they're not bringing in a constant stream of revenue. The, the transfer in that we do from the general fund each month are, is not considered a revenue source, because it's just general fund dollars being transferred in. So at their recommendation, I have moved the task force and the youth bureau as line items. Um, I did put it within the county sheriff budget, because I, I want you to still be able to see those departments separately, but they have a new sub-fund number, so they're right behind the sheriff's pages. And I don't have copies that we printed, but I can definitely send you guys copies of those. So now it's all included into the, um, into the general fund, so there's not so many transfers out. So really, it's a wash, because it brings them into revenue, they, if their revenue goes into the, to the general fund, and then the transfers outline obviously diminishes down to, um, just the, just the county agent being transferred money out now. So it went from five hundred and ninety-five down to twenty-three thousand five hundred for transfers out. So it just saves, saves time on our end for journal entry, those dollars every month, and it'll all just be included then under the sheriff's budget.
Okay.
So are you going to send us new copies of the completed budget with all the worksheets and everything on it?
Yes, um, I, I had to create all of those line items, you know, in the general fund, so they're, I don't, oh, I did put them, I did put dollar notes in there. They are in there, so I've mostly been working off of the budgets, um, that the state has provided, you know, that the movement. So yes, I will get you updated sheets on those, because there was a few other, once I plugged in the, the dol- the tax dollars that you guys approved of preliminary budget, then it, I have a formula that populates the state based on the total state. So some of the mill levies changed just a little bit on our political subdivisions. They went down like one, like a hundredth of a mil or whatever. So there's a little bit of difference in the, in the mill levies, too, which lowered the overall increase of the budget.
So are we gonna, are we gonna get updated sheets that we stick in, or are we gonna get a new, a copy of the whole thing?
Yeah, if you wanna just keep your preliminary, like bundled together and take it out of your book and just store it somewhere else, and then just, I'm gonna send a whole new one, because otherwise, it's too much.
Okay, I appreciate that, yep.
Um, and I didn't change any of the preliminary numbers that you approved. I just put them over in the final column for now, the new numbers, because I had, I went through it and recalculated, like the salaries, make sure, and I had some errors in there, too, but a lot of them were a wash in and out. It didn't, none of it increased the budget, the budget actually had gone down some. So yes, I will send out an entire new printed budget.
So just a question to, you know, save the world, save the trees. Are you planning on doing this, like, real quick or after we meet with, uh, state auditor? Because will they have some recommendations for changes, and then there will be a few more adjustments?
It's only August. My plan was.
Well, they said they would, um, be meeting this week, and even, even if it's next week, I think we should, uh...
Well, he told me that all the financials were done, and now they do it separately, the financials from the actual audit process. So this week, they were doing the audit process, they were waiting, they had to wait a really long time on the water board to get them their information, and Travis just felt like we gotta push through that, and I think they got their information now.
I think so. I'll, I'll double check with Mark, but should have. I know he had everything prepared, it's just.
So.
Well, they indicated that they would make some recommendations.
Yeah, and like I said, with the conversation with them last week, that, you know, I questioned the task force and the bureau, and they said, yeah, that, that would've been one of their recommendations, so go ahead and move it. So, yeah, I don't know, if you want me to wait or if you want.
I think we should wait till, right, because you, you'll send out one now, and then maybe in a week, you'll be sending out another one. So let's just wait and, and, uh, until after separate budget, so to speak, uh, mailings within a week or two. But if they don't, well, they're gonna get back to us shortly, they have to, so I would say wait till after that.
That was one of my other deals. Okay, the next thing that I got, this is just a question, and that's that sheet with all the little colored question marks on there. I would like to know why we can't fill that in. Why can't we know what those numbers are, so we know what each of those departments is actually costing us? It's just missing information. Some places we do and some we don't.
The, um, and some of these, um, are like a, maybe only have one or two people, and if one of the employees does not take health insurance, for instance, then you would know exactly what plan they chose. And according to law, we can't know that.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that you're correct on that, I'll get that checked out.
We can only know what we pay as a total.
Well, on, with regard, okay, saying that, you can't possibly do that on someone with two people in the department? I disagree, but we'll go with that. We still have many more question marks that could be filled out, to help us with our budgeting process.
Well, retirement, you can go ten percent for everyone across the board. Social Security is.
It could be done by department, I'm just curious why this is.
Well, then go ahead and do, I don't, go ahead and do it by department.
It should be.
I already have it figured out as a whole when I do my budget.
I know, I'm asking why we can't do it as a department? Why can't we know what the state's attorney, what that, that department causes? We do it with some of them, the youth bureau has most of them filled in.
Well, like social security, workman's comp, unemployment comp, those aren't benefits. Those are not benefits.
Social Security is not a benefit?
No, we are required by the IRS to pay seventy-five percent.
All right, there was just a question.
We're required to pay workman's comp.
There's a lot of that, in my opinion, that could be filled in, but that was just a question, so I'm done with that.
Okay. Is that, was that, okay, is, are, what, does that conclude budget line items?
Yes, it does.
Okay, audit prepared balance report?
Okay, the, I think I gave you guys a copy of that. There's a, a pretty large error on there on fund twenty-one fifty. It shows that we have, uh, year-to-date revenues of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine fifty-seven. From the state, we actually have five hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy cents. There's a difference of three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
That was probably just a typical analysis part, I will have her look into it. Not sure why, um, this, like, this, little mistakes like this have to be brought into a public meeting. There have been many months, actually years, that I have not prepared, I have always prepared this, not given it to the board, because everything I do is scrutinized in a public meeting. This could've been a simple email, Marvin, saying, hey, I checked out twenty-one fifty, and I don't think it's right, did you check into it?
Okay.
It would've been looked into and already fixed, could've been that simple.
Okay. Then you, you, here's another one there, twenty-one forty-five, please fix that and up, send us an update. Okay?
These are reports that I'm not even required to do.
I know, I'm not sure why we're doing them, but anyhow, that's your fund, that's your, your gain, that's what you want.
But I will stop sending them to you, because you don't need them.
Okay, audit, and do you have any other questions on your balance report?
Nope, just that I won't accept the one that was presented, and I'll wait for the future one that's correct.
Okay.
I'm just making a statement, I can do that.
AR?
ARPA, that's, right now, the monies are deposited into their CARES fund. And ARPA is a very special set of monies that has very set of special restrictions by the federal government. I would like to see those monies put into its very own fund. So that way, for, for transparency and clarity, that we'd have that money deposited into its very, create an own fund for it. So I'm gonna make a motion.
Well, that's all.
We all know that it's set aside and restricted to.
It's included with another fund, please let me finish, I have the floor.
Marvin, there's no other monies in there except for the seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents.
What's the title of that fund?
It's twenty-one oh four, it says CARES fund.
Says CARES fund, okay, this is not CARES fund. We have CARES money, and we have, and there are expenditures underneath the CARES, and there are transfers in and out underneath the CARES. Yes, there are. So we transferred from the CARES fund into the general fund. That is.
Last year.
It, so that fund has transfers in it, she says there's not, there are.
This is how it started out.
Mister Chairman, I have the floor, I would like to make a motion.
Make your motion.
I move all monies received from the American Rescue Plan Act to be deposited into a special fund titled American Rescue Plan Act.
Motion is to put all the American Rescue Plan Act money into its own fund?
That's correct, titled that way.
Is there a second to that motion? Do I have a second to that motion? Do I have a second to the motion? Hearing none, hearing none, motion failed due to lack of a second. Next are the portfolio updates. I'll start with myself once again, I have none at the present moment. Uh, Marvin?
I just have a question, this came from the extension agent office. It said that, uh, there might've been a misunderstanding from a conversation, but they wanted to know if we approved their budget and they could go ahead and hire somebody. They wanted to know if we approved their twenty-twenty-two budget. Did anybody tell them that we had approved that budget?
I have not.
I have not?
Well, I know exactly where this conversation come from, because I had a call from Craig Ascom. Um, he wasn't able to make it to the April fourth meeting, so he asked me if I could let him know, when I let him know. I said, yeah, the preliminary budget was approved, and nothing in your specific budget had been changed. He said, thanks, I haven't either. Well, then I get a call from him last week, saying that, uh, Marvin tells Jim Gray that I do not have the authority to give out that information. Well, a preliminary budget and a commission meeting is a public meeting, so that is public information. And that's, all I told him is that the preliminary budget was approved. I didn't say anything about hiring anybody or anything to that.
I had a phone call from Mister Jim Gray, he's the district manager for Extension Agency. He wanted to know if the final budget was approved. He had the, the impression that they had is that we had approved the final budget for that office, and I told him, no. I said, we have a preliminary budget, we do not have a final number approved. He said, thank you, that's all I needed to know.
Okay, we got.
That's it.
Okay, uh...
Uh, Water Resource, uh, Board met last week, kinda business as usual. They're just looking at, um, various projects, um, that's been kinda on their docket for a long time, but it's kind of, uh, I don't foresee anything happening yet this year, Dan. I don't think they really moved on anything, not likely. So, um, they'll just have their monthly meetings and look for projects for next year. And I haven't had a library board meeting in a while. Um, when we have one, I'll report on that, and then, um, fair board annual meetings in October. So there's, um, really nothing to move forward with on the, on the fair until they have their, their annual meeting, and then, um, they do reorganization in, in January, so that's all I got.
They have their reorgani- oh, their reorganization meeting in January?
Yeah, that's when they elect their president, vice president. Yeah, that's when they elect their president, vice president, treasurer, all that stuff. They do that annually.
Because their next meeting, I forget what it is, but doesn't matter. Okay.
Yep.
Liza?
I don't have any updates at this time.
Just a little bit of an update. The rehab project on the Hazen Airport, or Hazen Airport, Mercer County Airport, the construction meeting was this morning at ten, so I didn't get there. But anyhow, they moved in, they are starting on it. They're like a week or two, or a week or so off, but hopefully, they can keep on going here. So the airport is shutting down, the runway and everything, and so we're going forward and getting progress done there. The, we had weed board meeting the other evening also, and, well, a lot of chemicals have moved out, and they were discussing, very likely, they are going to reorder some chemicals in, yet this year, some pellets were running kind of short, plus the good news to the bad news is the cost of chemicals, of course, is going up. And so we did that last year, the board did. They had a couple of pellets that they pre-ordered that they would have this year as a holdover for next year. And so I think that's the direction they'll probably be heading. And I think that's about all I have. Unless you've got any other questions? Good?
Okay.
Nope.
Anything else? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.
Shanna, did you need to know who's going to?